Resume our regular scheduled board meeting. First up is, we need to amend the agenda.
So, a second.
I have a motion by Mr. Case, a second by Dr. Grasso, to amend the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communications from the floor. Seeing none, we have updates from principals and directors.
Good evening, Shannon Wyler, Eaton Elementary. I just want to say that we are off to a great start for the beginning of this school year. We have had a lot of testing underway, NWEA is all done, we're in the middle of COGAC testing, so we're really doing a lot to see where our students are starting off, so that we can pick up our instruction where they need to be instructed as we go throughout the school year. We're working on getting our routines down, there's been some field trip requests already, so we're really starting to get it in the swing of things. And I'm not sure if any of you have, I'm sure you've heard from our special education teachers, but I just want to give a really big shout out to our special education team. They are doing a ton of work right now with the transition from our old Indian IEP system to the new special program system, and it has not been easy. And I've watched our special education teachers just really doing the hard thing of learning this new system when it's not working all the time, or working correctly, or is changing. So, they've been putting in a lot of hours beyond just the school days. So, if you see any of our special education staff, Dr. Larrabee, but all of the special education teachers, just give them kudos because they're doing some hard things right now. But we're off to a great start.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, the first, the next item on our agenda tonight is a special presentation for Barton Co. They're going to walk you through the scope of two different projects, both of which we're going to request permission for you to advertise this evening, but we want to make sure that we can go over those details and give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have. Karen and Ryan, I appreciate you both being here. Who's still on the show tonight?
I think I am with some assistance.
Alright, I will click when you tell me to click.
Alright.
Thank you.
I am Karen Fisher, architect with Barton Cobell. So, first, we thought we would walk through Eaton. This colorful plan here is our proposed phasing plan of the project. Once we have a contractor on board, we'll have a better idea of the exact dates. But basically what this shows is that we would move through kind of one color. A pod, up to five classrooms at a time, and they would take that over for about two months, doing all of the renovation work within the classroom. So that is the HVAC, the lights, the ceilings, painting, taking off any final that is on the walls. We're doing the flooring and base. The scope in the classrooms, and then the roof overhead as well. And then, once one pod is finished, we give the school a couple of weeks to shuffle kids and furniture around, and then start on the next one. So, we anticipate that they may start, this is an old locker room that is going to become a new boiler room. They may start some work in there in December, and then kind of waiting on lead times of equipment and things. We probably wouldn't start most of this until sometime in the spring semester, maybe February, maybe. But again, once we have somebody on board, we don't want them to start until they have everything ready to finish that thing. And then we'll kind of, we'll go around, and then the areas in the middle, especially with some alternates that we are bidding to figure, main set of restrooms, and then to put a staff restroom, those are two different alternates that don't show up on this plan. The media center, and then some of the HVAC in the current office area would happen during the summer. And then, it'll work through the whole school year, the summer, and then into the spring of the following year. So, and then everything in green, the hallways, we think they're going to start the demo as we work through the different spaces, but the final finishes, the new flooring, the wall protection on the walls and paint. Ceilings and lights will not be put in until summer of 2027, and gym as well. Great picture of things, I guess.
There is some domestic water replacement as well, so there is some galvanized piping still in the building. So, the intent is to take that out where we can get to it, especially in like the hallways above ceiling, we'll take those ceilings out and replace that piping. We will connect, reconnect to what's in the wall though, just because it's kind of cost prohibitive to tear down each wall in order to replace that piping in the wall. But in the future, if there's any renovations to those restrooms, that's a great time to get into that wall and replace that piping. Karen kind of hit on it, but the biggest, or one of the biggest portions of this, I guess, is replacing the HVAC system. How we laid out the phasing isn't much of a coincidence, because that's actually where most of the HVAC kind of segments itself. So each pod has its own current HVAC system. The new system is also going to work roughly in that same pod, so that we can break down that whole system, do the work in there and not affect other areas of the building while we're doing that work. Karen also mentioned too adding a boiler, that'll help with efficiency of the building. The old gas-fired rooftops are only about eighty percent efficient on a good day. Now the boilers can get up to ninety-five percent or above efficiency class. Not sure if you hit on the insulation above the walls. Yep, so that'll help also with your building utility costs and how it's done above the roof, this whole corporation. So, we're going to insulate the building a little bit better, put in some more efficient systems. Drag those utility costs down for you guys.
Yeah, the roof wall get replaced, some electrical gear, a lot of things that you won't see, but we'll get this, we'll face them as well.
I know things happen, and I know you can't know for sure on everything, but is your goal that a classroom, or a specific class or pod will only have to move once? Like you move them out, and then they move back and they're done, or will it be?
Yeah, I would anticipate that, but that's really up to kind of the administration to decide how they're going to shuffle.
Yeah.
Students around, but yeah, I would anticipate.
I think our hope with this, again, and when we, when there's a GC, they may have different opinions, I suppose, but I think our hope with this phasing plan, one of our hopes is just that, that all of the buildings under construction for a pretty long time.
Right.
An individual teacher theory is moving out once and moving back in once. Karen, can you just remind us all, currently there's gas piping across the top of the whole building. Ryan, you two, running to each of those rooftop units, and there will only be gas piping running from where to where when we're done?
Stay on the roof.
Yeah, so. Currently, the gas comes in over here, and then it immediately goes up on the roof, and then comes across and feeds all these different pods with gas to each of the gas-fired rooftops. Since we're putting the boilers here, our intention is to replace this section that comes over this way to that boiler room, and then feed that boiler room from what's on the roof, and then everything else gets taken off as we re-roof the building. So, A, you'll get new gas piping up on the roof, and B, we'll reduce the amount of gas piping that there is.
It'll be a win. And we're, can you just remind us, I think we know, but a two-pipe system, which is what we're going to, means what?
So, you, yeah, what we're talking about is a two-pipe heating-only system. We're still going to use a packaged rooftop unit for each pod, which means that the cooling is produced in that rooftop unit in each pod. And then, so yeah, the two pipes is heating-only going to those areas. We'll have VAB boxes off of that, so we'll have some reheat capability in the summer or in the very humid times. So whenever it gets kind of humid in the building, sixty-five, seventy percent humidity, which does happen from time to time, we're able to help dehumidify that. So that hot water going to those VAB boxes is a very efficient way to do that.
The, I don't need to get ahead of ourselves. You want to talk alternates for this project real quick?
Sure, um, we, given what I have on the budget, it shows four. We're going to do three and just paste it, how you think stuff into them, paste it. So, um, sorry, I didn't think to print a plan of the new arrangement for this set of restrooms here, but the idea is it comes over a little bit into these rooms, but it makes a new hallway connecting these two main corridors with the girls on one side and boys on the other. And it will have shared sinks off of that new hallway. So it's just the stalls within the restrooms, which helps with supervision. So that is our one big alternate, and then we have another one that builds a single family restroom or staff restroom, adult restroom over here. So putting those as separate, and then the third one is just replacing the exhaust fans under.
So with this, with us, you're putting in like the light, like LED lights on HVCI, we'll be able to really judge, you know, just, you know, just how much of the savings that we want. We calculate, and once the project's done, we're often around times to see if we need to move forward.
I agree. Yeah. Questions so far? Show them some pictures.
Yeah.
One thing, and she mentioned it, the wall coverings, wall protection, I always get that wrong. Tyce is looking at me. The wall protection will be very similar, really identical product to what we're putting up at Albany right now. We think we like that quite a bit. So when you hear that, that's what we're talking about here too. One difference will be, in this project, that wall protection, I believe, will go all the way up to ceiling. As opposed to there being a strip of drywall at the top, so.
This is just a view of the, of a typical classroom, they'll say. So, looking at a pretty neutral palette with our interior designer, worked with the admin team. There's some gray LBT electric vinyl tile flooring already in one of the hallways there, the gym. So basically continuing that through the rest of the school. And then some light gray paint, and then some darker gray accents in the classroom. This little bump here shows where we are building out the ceiling just a little bit to put that insulation up above ceiling over the steel.
On exterior walls?
On the exterior walls, yes. So, most classrooms end up with two, some have three, the interior ones.
And those of you who were here, Tyce was losing track, was it two or three Christmases ago?
Thank you.
Three.
Okay. This insulation work should keep us away from trouble on those extremely cold weather days in terms of the water lines.
This is currently, if you're familiar with the building, there's a little stage with some purple columns here. We're going to take that out and give it a little more flexibility and even surface in that alcove, and then that's a good view towards the media center from that same area. First of view of the hallway, sort of seeing that wall protection surface, but.
Bullets and boards, we're taking a similar approach to what we're doing at Albany. The layout will look a little different because the pods don't exist at Albany, but there will be bulletin boards outside to go with each room. I think the art room is getting bulletin boards forever.
And then I think we're still playing with what the actual accent colors are, but we'll have some kind of muted colors within the pod corridors at the door alcoves and then. Bulkhead leading down into it.
So one of the things that we liked, we think we like at Albany so far is we used some color for weight finding there. We talked about that a little bit by hallway. Taking a similar approach here. Again, the layout's different, so it'll present slightly differently. But again, from the hallway, from a camera angle, we'll be able to identify hallways by color. And we think that'll be a good thing, so I appreciate that they've incorporated that in.
This just shows the pod view in accents.
And Karen, am I right? If I'm not, put me down gently, but that bulkhead, you're actually creating so that we can season that color from the hall, is that my memory? Here at the entrance to the pod?
This, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, if you have a camera view of this hallway, you can tell if it's east or west.
And we're adding some.
Any Eaton questions?
Can I, okay. I think that from a board perspective, one of the things you need to be aware of is obviously the efficiency and energy. Dr. Goyen's done a great job of sending us some of those reports. You've probably seen them from SiteLogic and even as far back as, what's the name, Skilman Report. So Eaton's been pretty inefficient. Obviously, we have some building envelope issue with that kind of above-ceiling parent, the wall-type area. So obviously, those two things they're addressing. I think that the flooring, wall covering, some of that is kind of a necessary evil when you start talking about tearing out the ceiling, put in all-new HVAC, which was another one of the big priorities. And then, of course, the other fourth bullet point is the roof, which I haven't really said too much about, but the roof is well beyond its warranty. If you remember right, five years ago, you did a Trimco kind of a service program warranty thing, and that kind of got us a little bit farther along. But I think you're hitting, if you do all this stuff, I think you're hitting the major concepts that are, you know, crucial to that building having some lifespan to it.
Yeah, would agree.
Yep. Okay, thank you, sir.
You ready?
Sure. Hi, so the high school pool.
Sure, yeah, the existing dehumidification unit's kind of buried in the chemical room, just inside the school building, yeah, and it's hard to get to, and unfortunately, there's really not many direct replacements, if any at all. So after talking through it, we decided to put a new pool dehumidification unit up on the roof, and that will duct into the space from that location. We will move a little bit more CFM, I believe, with the new unit, try to get a little bit better airflow. And then also the unit will be working, because it sounds like your, this school has had some issues here for a while, so. As part of that, we're going to run some new fabric ducts, which kind of shows up on the dark line there on the ceiling. It's going to be half-round fabric ducts. The whole purpose of that is to try to keep it up as close to the ceiling as we can, so we're not affecting any views or anything like that, or any of the lighting. So we'll try to keep that up and out of the way, but we're shooting for some better air dispersion throughout that space to hit the walls, hit with some dehumidified air, so that we're hopefully not condensing any water on the walls. Just try to get it put back in service here with the dehumidification.
System. Is that ducting fairly common in that kind of space?
Yeah, fabric is a great use of a pool because it can't corrode. Because even stainless steel, if you have stainless steel hangers or something like that, those can still corrode in that kind of environment, so. Yeah, the fabric is still really good, way to go.
Touch on the location of that duct? It's not above the pool.
Yeah.
That's really a big deal, you might imagine, but you know, it's not.
Can't actually get to it.
Yeah.
And I guess as part of that, Karen might hit on this in a little bit, when she showed you some different views. In order to have that underneath the ceiling now, we are in fact raising the ceiling up, so that also helps with some of those sightlines from that spectator area. But that also, yeah, helps keep you guys having access to what you need to get to.
And Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, as you all remember, we started down this road because the dehumidification unit went out, and that dehumidification unit's pretty mission-critical to the space. The roof, we think is a great placement, because the next time it's kind of touched this thing, it's much easier to access, the duct works in place, all those kinds of things. Setting ourselves well up for the future. Am I right that this new unit, the humidity that it captures, it will actually drain pool water back into the system?
Yes, so as it dehumidifies, it'll condense water inside the unit, goes to a drain can, and then that drain, you know, on a normal unit, we might drain that right to roof drain or something on a rooftop unit. But since this is a dedicated pool unit, we know that that water, or that water vapor basically that's being condensed out of there is as clean as the pool is. We'll actually take that condensed water and put it back into the pool to kind of help with how much makeup water you're going to be using. Because even though it's all a condition in controlled space, there is still quite a bit of evaporation from that pool into that air. And then hopefully, it's kind of completing that cycle, making sure we're trying to use water as best we can.
I don't know that you all care, but it's not going, the new unit is not on the pool roof because the joists have such a long span, so it's actually on the whole section of this roof next to it, so.
Because there is some steel reinforcing that has to get installed in order to support the weight that was planned for initially when that roof was put on. So instead of reinforcing those very long joists, which can get very expensive, we have much shorter spans, so we have to reinforce them.
Here are the next picture.
And so other work in here, these white things that you see, they'll be hanging from wires. So those are the light fixtures, and they will shine up at the ceiling. And as you see, they don't go all the way around, they're put up pretty high, being up to reflect down. We are putting in a new ceiling, but it, and it will have new grid and tile. A big reason why we did that is just because of the head height issues that you have in the back of the viewing deck. We didn't feel like we could open it up to have a steel joist right at his place head, so we're keeping it in, but we are raising it up. And then the other big architectural component in here is redoing the paint. So, we walked through with an industrial paint expert from Sherwood Miller's that, and they were giving the contractors a pretty generous area of where the paint has peeled off the worst, did some tests and things, and just have understood more of how it's lost, the coats on top of the old coats have lost the attention. So here are then some areas that we'll need to do some more intensive prep and scratching. And then, a lot of the areas are kind of lower, like eight feet or lower is where you see a lot of the peeling. And then above, there will also be some prep involved before we put new paint on, but it won't be as intense as the bottom. And then this is a new sign. What we decided to do, the signs that are painted just with the sign. Go to another view. Okay, this is just showing the other way.
Keep going.
Yeah. And then we have a couple of views from the pool deck, just to show you the existing versus new. So this is standing pretty close to the rail, the ceiling comes down, and then those lights hanging. Again, that's the ductwork is hidden above the ceiling. And then in our new setup, you can see that it raised up. So you still have some light hanging down, but it'll all be a lot higher than what it is currently. And then there's another view from the back of the gallery, to kind of see how much that goes down. We're basically raising everything up in the pool to this high level that's in the back of the gallery.
So, Karen, am I right that we kind of discovered a major player in the paint issues that we're having in that space was maybe for preparation as we've repainted that space over the years?
Yes.
And if we get the preparation correct, we think we'll have better performance out of that painting.
Yeah, there's basically like a glossy layer, I thought it were, underneath the top layers, that it's still glossy, so that is why it's kind of getting away from it. So the goal is we get down to that layer and then give that the scratching and prepping so that it's ready to adhere the new cover.
And am I right that one of the, like the alternates is part of it?
And then we are bidding an alternate just so we can see the price of, to have them do the intensive prep over every square foot of wall. But Sherwood Miller just thought that was overkill just from what we were seeing and testing. But that's the only way to really know what the price difference would be in that labor. His point was, for why we are bidding it the way we are, was that if it is a really significant six-figure difference to do that or something, you could do little touch-up areas as you see, failure or peeling in the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, so many times to make up that difference. And again, feels pretty confident that it wouldn't be a huge issue where the whole thing would start to fail. But yes, we're going to put that as an alternate just so we can see what that number truly is. If we get not that great of a difference of price, then we can just go ahead and just have them do it all, but.
As far as timeline on this thing goes, we're hoping to start in?
End of March, so the end of the season is the goal, and that's everything true.
And there will be greater than the pool?
Yes.
It's part of the work.
Yeah, and then the roof is getting replaced. We're anticipating there'll be some roof deck that gets replaced along that, with that, so we're doing that as an allowance. From where we could see, we could see some areas where there were little rust holes, so we're not sure what's in the whole area, so we have them put in to bid for twenty percent. And once they open that up, twenty percent replacement of the deck itself, yeah. Once they open that up, we'll see what that actual amount needs to be, and they'll adjust up or down.
We got some title repair in there. I know some of the areas against the wall where a lot of that moisture, some of the tiles popped off and a few of those areas.
The ceiling tile?
No, tiles around the edge. Do you remember on the bottom?
Yeah, I don't think there's, is there any tile baked into the?
Maybe not, I think the floor tile.
Yeah, I mean, there's just a few areas along the bottom, along that back corner there, like the back of the eagle. There's a few areas there where condensation's built up all that tiles. It's popping off where they painted tile over it, and it's just, that, it may be something, there may be. And I mean, we're talking, I can't even look at it, we're talking like four inches by just little areas through there or something.
Now's the time to look at it, though.
Yeah, now's the time, yeah, yeah, just to know that maybe.
Thank you.
Questions do you have? Who's good? Pictures looking. Thank you both very, very much. Quite a bit of work, and it's gone to get us to this point. I really appreciate your time and your energy and attention to detail. It's a great deal. Thank you both.
And then our plan is that we would put both of those projects out for tomorrow, with the date of October first, and then come back and meet after that, and want to say it's. And then come back and meet after that, I want to say it's 13.
I think that's right.
13, for approval with the crisis. These are our estimates, the hard costs is what you need to see the contractor bids would be. And then the soft costs at 10%. And then we do, we want to bid those two first and then come back and bid additional roofing over the auxiliary gym and the root auditorium. The high school, once we see the first bid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are welcome to hang out. You're welcome to go home. I would ask for the board's consideration to give us permission to advertise the Eaton Elementary School project.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Engel, a second by Mr. Case to create permission to advertise for the Eaton Elementary School project. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. I would ask the board to consider giving us permission to advertise the Delta High School Pool and Pool Roof project.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Case, a second by Mr. Adams to, for permission to advertise Delta High School Pool and Pool Roof. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys have a wonderful week.
Thank you.
Get home safe.
Thank you.
Nice, thank you, sir. Consent agenda. Happy to answer any questions that you may have, otherwise I would ask for your approval.
So move. Take it.
The second with that. Mr. Engel, I have a motion by Dr. Grasso, a second by Mr. Engel to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, are we ready for finance? Got lots of pages in here. We are ready for finance.
All right, purchases over 10,000. First, we have educational furniture. This is for the Albany project. This is out of construction fund for $33,000, $151.70. And we also have Rightway, this is for a snow blade and salt spreader for one of our maintenance trucks. This is out of operations for $15,215. We'd ask for your approval on those two projects.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Adams. Are these for both one and two?
Yep.
For items one and two, a motion by Mr. Adams, a second by Mr. Engel. To approve the, both of these purchases as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Although I don't really want to think about a snow blade and a salt spreader right now, but.
Ty's coming.
I'm dry with her. If we purchase it, we will do it.
That's true.
So our next item is adoption of resolutions. This is our first set of resolutions we'll do for the 2026 budget. We have the resolution to reduce appropriations for the 2025 budget. And then we have three rainy day resolutions. And I would ask for your approval on these three resolutions and Lori will have signature approvals for you after the meeting.
Make a motion to approve the resolutions as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Case, a second by Dr. Grasso to approve the resolutions as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is approval of SA5, so these are the financials of the building's ECA accounts. And so the treasures of the building send these to Cheryl. She gets them ready, then we both go over them to make sure that we don't see any errors in the accounting. Make sure they balance the bank statements and so forth. So we've done that and we think they are ready for your.
So move.
Second.
The motion by Dr. Grasso, a second by Mr. Engel to approve the SA5s as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All right, my last item is monthly financial review, so we're looking at the month of August. And so you can see at the top in the instructional fund, this month we were down revenue. Spinners over revenue, 61,381. And the main reason for that was we had a non-cert payroll on August 31st, so we had three, three non-cert payrolls in the month. And then in operations, we were down 451, which is again, we do not get revenue in operations for the most part until December. So for the year so far, we're looking at 218 for the good in education. Accounted by 329 to the bad in operations, so a difference, we are down 110,453,55 for the year. So really not a bad place to be at this point. Next slide, this is just the amount of appropriations that we've spent. So again, we are looking pretty good in education and operations. Next slide, trying to make it a little bigger for you here. So right now, we're looking at enrollment in August of 2568. We don't think it's going to stay there. We think it will continue to drop until that October 1st date. So by the time we get there, we're hoping that we're over 2550, which is what our estimate was. So we think we'll be up a little bit, but probably not a lot. And then at the bottom, we have employment, so 183 certified, 194 non-certs. And then the next slide, it just shows us the ending cash balances in the two funds. Education, operations, and then again, that 110 there at the bottom is the same number you saw before. And I've added one more slide.
Ooh, bonus slide.
And this is our investment summary from January until now. So our, our bonds, the money that we borrowed and that are setting in either our bank or the Bank of New York right now. Mostly in money markets, we've made 10,000 some dollars checking account. Which is our first merchants checking account, 154,000. Minus the fees that go along with that. And then in Trust Indiana, we've made 209. So for a total so far of $369,000, which is not too bad. So one of the things that when we do bonds, we do an interview with S and P. And one of the things they always ask us is, does the board get a review of investments? And the answer is yes, and they say, I say, how often? We say, once a year. So now it's more than once a year. So we'll probably leave this in, if you guys don't mind, and put it in every month. It's not hard to do so.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we happy to answer any questions, otherwise thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under information and proposals, the first item tonight is a DMS Kings Island field trip. Our sixth graders are hoping to travel on May 8th of 2026. I would ask for your.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Engel, a second by Dr. Grasso to approve the DMS Kings Island trip as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
DMS DHS ECA pay scales, we do this annually, it's just for state board accounts purposes. And in your, your packets is a list of how much workers and officials are paid for those, those events by sport. I would ask for your approval.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Case, a second by Mr. Adams to approve the DMS DHS ECA pay scale as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Fundraising, of course, information only. Ashley Hughes is holding a fundraiser to honor support. Mr. Reed with proceeds going towards St. Jude's and stand up to cancer. Whitney Freeman and the DHS Student Council are selling homecoming shirts in September with those proceeds going toward Student Council. Dan's company, DHS FFA, are all holding a bingo fundraiser from September 17th through October 1st. Proceeds going towards the FFA ECA count. Any more letters there and wrong? Whitney Freeman and the DHS Student Council are holding a homecoming dance on September 27th. Those proceeds going towards the ECA count. Teresa Swatchware and Roy's Student Council collecting food donations throughout the year with proceeds going toward local food pantries. Chelsea Williams is going to hold a scholastic book fair the end of October. Proceeds going towards the ECA count. Kia Patrick and Secret Families are going to collect donations from mid-November through the end of November with proceeds going towards Secret Families. Again, Teresa Sware and Student Council, Roy's, selling Spencels and pretzels, not to be confused. From February 9th to the 13th with proceeds going towards Student Fund. Kia Patrick and the DJHS are selling candy grams from February 4th through the 11th. Proceeds going toward Honor Society. And again, Kia Patrick is going to hold an eighth grade semi-formal dance on May 8th. I'm sorry, as presented with proceeds going towards the yearbook fund. That's all I've got.
Donation?
All right, let me, let me correct one thing I said on the investment report. The bond, the bond interest that you see is only on our local money. This, this chart does not show you the interest we make on the money that sets in the trustee bank, the Bank of New York. It's not on there. I can probably get it on there.
It's another slide.
It's another slide.
Another slide.
All right, I just want to make that clear.
No, thank you.
There are no donations, but I do have a request for the Food Service Department to surplus items as presented and ask for your approval.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Adams, a second by Dr. Grasso to approve the request to surplus items from the Food Service Department as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Letters or notes? I have none. Mr. Engel, board member comments?
Thank you very much. First of all, I'll thank Barton Co. and their people coming here to present the exciting changes we're going to have potentially at Eaton and the high school pool. What, that, I'm pretty excited about that Eaton building. It's a great building, just needs, needs some 10 to 11 care. I think it's a great opportunity for us to do that and bring it up to a better standard for us, for our kids and for our teachers. So I'm pretty excited about that. And the, the pool, pools are pools. They're always going to be, they're always going to be maintenance and stuff, but this one. This is a pretty exciting opportunity for us to update it for, for our kids and our program and have a pool area that's going to last us for next 15, 20 years. Just pretty excited about both those projects coming up. The only thing we got, I see we're, we're bringing back the homecoming dance. I'm pretty excited about that. And our Student Council and Mrs. Goss coming together to bring back our homecoming dance. We haven't had it in a while. And I hope the, the kids will come out and participate. It's, it's always great to be able to do that for, for our students. That's all I've got.
I echo the comments from Mr. Engel and just a few added comments. Certainly appreciate comments from Mrs. Wilder concerning the special education efforts being made by that staff. It's always a challenge to make those types of change. And just always impressed with the community support efforts from the schools. Great community outreach. That's all for me.
Certainly I would concur. Thanks to Barton Co. for commenting, sharing. Just kind of going back over the details, we've been talking about this and dealing with this for quite some time. So it's good to maybe bring this project to a close and, and get it going for, for our buildings and our, and our folks. Thanks, Sharon, for coming about NWA and, and again, shout out to the special ed team. Didn't know that, so thanks for bringing that. Certainly see some of them be willing to thank them for the extra efforts of what, what's going on in their area right now. Thanks to the new employees and those that have been with us. Appreciate their time. They benefited our kids in one way or another and. Seems like things have gone very well this school year from the start so far. So that's always, that's always good to hear. It's always challenging. We, we know we've had starts in the past that maybe there were some busing issues or some things that popped up. But it seemed like this year so far, everything has just really gone well. And that's a testament to really all the administrators and the buildings and the grounds and everybody that, that worked so hard to, to make sure that this goes up without a hitch. And we'll have hitches, but it seems like so far this year, it's been, been pretty well. So appreciate all, all the efforts from everybody.
Well, I concur with my fellow board members. Now we are one month in, we're full swing of things now. I think everybody's got their footing. And yeah, I agree with John said, I mean, it seems like it's been a great start to the year. All the sports boards, that, the ECAs are going strong. I wish all the teams the best. And hopefully everybody keeps a great sportsmanship of what we've seen so far. Barton Co., again, thanks for, for coming, putting in all that hard work they, they've been doing to, to try to get our buildings up to. Up to what we consider, I guess, as par, but of course for us here at Belcom, you know, we like to keep our buildings going. We don't like roof leaks. We don't like cold spots, so we like to keep those going strong.
Thank you. I agree. I, another thing I want to say is all the fundraisers. Thank you to the staff for the time it takes to run those fundraisers and make sure, because it's, it's not always easy. But thank you, I mean, it just shows that there's a lot of support out there for our students and I appreciate that. But thank you to Barton Co. I'm sharing. I know you're probably tired of talking about it and ready to see it start. So, but I'm excited and I will say after our last board meeting, it was really neat to kind of peek around at some of the. I guess progress at Albany and it looks so nice and I'm excited for that, for the staff to have their building whole and, and be ready to go. So and sports are fun. We get to tour Culver Military Academy for the tennis team last weekend. Shout out to the tennis team's hard at work and, which I know about because my son's on that, but lots of good sports things going on this fall, so. I agree, John. I think it's off to a great start this year.
Yep, thank you. I want to thank Mrs. Calaway for being here tonight and just to really sincerely appreciate your leadership. It means a lot. DCCTA is a hugely important part of about certain kids around here, so thank you. I want to thank, I'm losing the voice. I want to thank Mr. Stevens. We, we have spent a lot of time talking about Albany, talking about Eaton, talking about the pool. It does feel like we get to a moment like this and have, have the information that we need to make good decisions with the resources that we have. Mr. Stevens plays an enormous part of getting us to that spot in lots of ways. And just as importantly, making sure projects conclude the way that we want them to conclude. So thank you for the things that we see you do and the things that we've done. It means a lot. I want to thank Mrs. Wilder. She's already put in big time and we haven't even started yet. But I appreciate her energy and willingness to learn and participate. I think she's going to be a tremendous leading asset to us as we go through this process at Eaton. So I have.
Doc, any words? Lori? Future meeting, the regular meeting for the school, Board of School Trustees is scheduled for Monday, September 22nd at 6:30 PM at the Administration Building. I will take a move for adjournment. I will take a move for adjournment, my motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Case, a second by Dr. Grasso, to, for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Michael.
Thanks, Steve.